Worth of newsletters and send it out. For the people who couldn't be here, we did hear from some that had other meetings planned and family trips and some were teaching ballgames. So this at least will get it into the record and we can share it down the road for those who couldn't be here. But thank you for taking the time. I think if I've counted right, this is the fourth one of these that we've done in some way or another throughout these six months. Either they've been Facebook dinner time chats or fireside chats. So I think this is the fourth one and it's a great thing to do, I think, from time to time to just catch up with each other and put news and info close in front of our faces where we can check base. This is a crucial time to do that, I think, as we look toward the fall. So thank you for taking the time to do it. I wanted to let you know just one brief housekeeping piece. We've activated the chat function. So we encourage you, if you have questions along the way, feel free to enter those in the chat box and Reba's going to field those, my partner in crime, Reba. She's going to field them and then there'll be two or three times. This meeting will be about four hours long, so it's not going to be that long. It's going to be great, just really tight. But we'll have a chance to read some of those chats. We won't get to all of them. Reba's going to skim them and see if there's immediate pieces that we need to look at. And then the rest that we don't get to, the team's going to look at them, put them in groups and address them in newsletter articles. So know that all of them will be looked at. So if you have anything that you have a question about at any point, feel free to enter that in. We're going to start with a meditation. I'm going to hand it off to Cynthia, who's going to lead us through meditation and a prayer.
I am so glad that Jack and I get to be with all of you for this town hall meeting before leaving on sabbatical. It seems like forever ago that we all went home and Stuart introduced us to a book of blessings and devotions by a man named John O'Donohue, appropriately titled "To Bless the Space Between Us." We had no idea that so much time and space would evolve, but it has. And tonight, we're in a place where we can celebrate a lot of the blessings that have come out of it. John frames his meditations with around the story of the prodigal son. And the father saying, or the narrator saying that the father began to rejoice while his son was still far off. And I think that's where we are tonight. We are at a solid place of rejoicing about the present place we find ourselves while we are still also rejoicing at what we see far off. So I want to read one of his poems, "A Blessing for Celebration Before Our Prayer." Now is the time to free the heart. Let all intentions and worries stop. Free the joy inside the self. Awaken to the wonder of life. Open your eyes and see the friends whose hearts recognize our faces as kin. Those whose kindness, watchful and near, encourages us to live everything here. See the gifts the years have given, things our effort could never earn. The health to enjoy who we want to be and minds that mirror the mystery. Let us pray. Lord God, we give thanks to you for where we find ourselves right now, even as we look toward the thing that remains far off. We rejoice in all the blessings that have been ours in these six months. We praise your name for the spirit that lives in this community of grace that we now know as never before, that we remain the church. The church has not closed. Bless our time this evening. Thank you for the leadership of this parish, for the volunteers, for the countless prayers. And we offer it all to your glory tonight through Jesus Christ our Lord.
Thank you, dear partner friend. I want to take a minute to update you on some really exciting news. For those who can't be here, they'll get this info after you do, but you will get first dibs at signing up because you were at the meeting. So there's a bit of a door prize in this. After this meeting, you'll get an email from me and on Sunday evening at 6:00 PM, we will have evening prayer outside, either in the Children of Grace parking lot or under the portica share, a simple spoken service for up to 50 people. So our Eventbrite page, you'll get a note from me that you can sign up for. So we're adding a Sunday evening service. We'll keep our Sunday mornings as they are with the nine o'clock Zoom and the 10:45 Facebook Live. But the bishop on Wednesday, when we all met with the clergy, opened that possibility up for us. And so I'm very, very glad, I'm very, very glad that we can at least have small groups of up to 50 total meet. So look for that note and if that's something that you want to do, that you feel comfortable doing, just sign up and there are details on the Eventbrite page that will guide you through that where you can reserve a spot. And know that that will be there each Sunday for as long as we can do it. Like the bishop said, we'll watch the numbers very closely and if things spike, if everyone behaved themselves over Labor Day, we should be able to continue doing this. If the numbers go up, we might very well have to scale it back, but we at least get to do it. So look for that from me after this and sign up and we'll be glad to meet whoever is able to be there. We also want to let you know that it would be possible, Reba pointed this out, for people who don't feel comfortable standing or being outside in person, since we'll be right there in the COG parking lot, or if it rains, under the portica share, people can also come in your cars. This also opens up a space for people to be able to come in your cars and park and roll down your window. So I'm really glad that we can offer this space. So look forward to that note. I'm going to pass it to Dan Scott, our senior warden, with enormous gratitude. I think back at that vestry meeting at the end of January, when we thought that we had everything mapped out for the entire year. And little did we know that six weeks later, we would find ourselves where we have. But Dan, thank you for what you've done and thank you for how you've been there for me for late night phone calls and pump up sessions. So I'm going to pass it to you.
Well, thank you. I think things are getting better indeed. The latest news from the bishop is most welcome and I think we're going to continue in a, maybe we take a step back, but we can take two steps forward. As part of the stewardship campaign, the theme was surrounded, the theme surrounding that campaign is based on stories. And I just wanted to have a quick reflection with all of you on where we've been and the power of stories. Some of the conversations with Stuart and Cynthia and I, I've really come to appreciate this concept of a story. They make up our lives. There are many layers to them. And these stories all have a constant theme where they take chaos and try to give us a pathway to order. And in those stories, we find ourselves in our souls, in which our soul is to confront the chaos every day courageously and transform our world of chaos into some kind of order, something that we can understand or something that we control and something that we can find meaning through that process. And what's amazing is that that chaotic world that hit us with the pandemic has been, you know, let's say, received, confronted courageously and transformed into something that resembles a better order. And let's just think back a little bit. We're the seventh largest of 114 dioceses and, or yeah, of 114 parishes in the diocese. So when the pandemic hit, we didn't know what we were in for. No one knew. The news, the story was changing every day. Was it, we didn't know how bad it was. We didn't know how you, could you transmit it? Some people are okay, some people weren't. You know, it was very chaotic. But I think under Stuart's leadership, much quicker than many other parishes in our diocese, set up some kind of quick Zoom online that we could, that we could get together and we could meet with. The administration, think about this, they had to confront the chaos of running a church and not be there. The church still had to function. We still had to pay our bills. We still had administrative things that had to take place and they figured out how to do that remotely and safely. We set up pastoral care group to check in on people. Think about that. What's their story? How are they doing? We needed current stories for people so we could reach out to them. One of the main important things in that was the outreach program continued and was bolstered by giving discretionary, bolstering to Stuart's discretionary funds to give to those people who are in the greatest need. And we went through that and I think a total of $14,000 has been given very generously by our community and then from Stuart to funnel it to the most deserving that we could find. And it's, I think it's worth noting too, if we step back a little bit, that no one has been, not, no one has gotten COVID from a church function, either working or in participating in the church. And that's not always the case with all the other churches, if you pay attention to the news. And so that's a positive thing. The protocols that we've set up, the procedures to have only, like Stuart said, to turn out and scrap them the next day because something changed. Our medical advisory team was very busy, was took this very seriously, along with the pastoral care and the formation teams. I think it's worth noting in the formation side that we have 17 small groups actively meeting, actively meeting right now. And the idea, well, you're here right now, but actively meeting throughout the week and the month and all has gone very, very well. And speaking of going very, very well, we need a shout out to the Grace School that has gone out without a hitch, without any issues. And the group that has done that has been fantastic. From the masks and the whole rules and what can we do? And they have really held that down. And I think that they're just, I just want to send a great thank you to them and their leadership has just been outstanding. Think back to that our worship has changed from in our dining rooms on a Zoom call to a nave service broadcasted over with Facebook. My aunt in Ohio tunes in. She wants to know if I'm saying anything and she listens to our services from time to time. To the new AVR system that we've approved, it's getting better and better and better. I think the whole pandemic is getting better and better. We're, we're hearing good news on many, many fronts. And we've had this chance, to Cynthia's point, to reflect on what really matters, where we find ourselves. How is this meaningful to us and find meaning in all the chaos? Speaking of chaos, there's, you know, there's chaos right now wherever we look around. We have civil unrest. We have defund the police. We have some states open, some states are closed. How do we handle all that? Some churches are open, some churches are closed. And that chaos is confronting us every day. And there's no better story to invest in than the unchanging strength of the church's story and its liturgy and its mission to help us to confront the chaos, to order it in a specific way, to specific values and actually bring meaning out of a challenging time. And there's no better place with institutions being challenged right now, to invest in a strong, unchanging church as she needs, she needs each and every one of you. And so I encourage you to support the stewardship campaign and realize how fortunate we really are to have such an amazing institution as this to support. So with that Stuart, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. So one of the things that we wanted to do tonight in the time that we have left is just to highlight a few key things for the parish as a whole, for those who are here and those who will watch this on film, just as we move into this space in the fall and really shifting, as we've done the past six months, into a new norm, a new way of being. Like Cynthia said, the church as a body never closed and never stopped meeting. The form that we took did. And there's been a lot of grief with that and a lot of discomfort and a lot of growing that's taken place within all of us. And I want to take this moment to thank Jennifer for her extraordinary work in designing our website. It's become our, if there is, it's our virtual online space, not, not being able to be within the brick walls. What we do is we have a platform that we can go to. And she's done an extraordinary job in helping shape and craft, as Dan said, the details that seem to change each day. You know, on Wednesday morning, when we got this news, she was the first person that I sent a text to, sitting in my car in the orthodontist parking lot, saying, let's shift this, find a way to get this out there. So I'm going to hand it over to Jennifer and she's going to take this moment to walk you through our Grace at Home website where we have this in front of you and on film, where she can guide us through some of those highlights.
Thanks Stuart. I appreciate that. We decided that we're going to continue to use the Grace at Home page throughout this time because it's a great place to gather kind of everything you need in one spot. So I hope everybody here has been using it and looking there for links and information about what's going on at Grace Church. If you have been in there in the past couple of days, you might have seen that it's been a little bit refreshed. So we wanted to just take you through some of the updates and make sure you know where to find everything. So it's been redesigned into one column. Hopefully that's a little bit easier for people to navigate. Our virtual worship services will continue to be up here at the top. And hopefully by now, everybody knows you can click on these links to find the worship bulletins. Those are typically updated on Thursday. So if you're looking earlier in the week, that link won't work. Noonday prayer. This one leads you to the service online. It's not a separate worship bulletin, same for complin. And then the nine o'clock, this will take you to the Zoom. The 10:45 will take you over to Facebook if that's where you want to watch the 10:45 Facebook livestream. If you'd rather watch it here, the services are down below. And I don't know whether everybody knows this, but if you start the service and click this little button, you can make it bigger on your screen. So just a little hint in case people didn't know that. And these are always going to be the upcoming service for morning prayer or live, if it's live. And for noonday prayer, same thing, then it's live when it's live. And then we keep the previous weeks there for anybody to go back and watch until the next Wednesday. This little box is new this afternoon because we have in-person worship and prayer opportunities. So Stuart said he'd send y'all a link, but the link is actually right here. So you heard it here first. So if you want to join us for evening prayer, you will click that link, be taken over to Eventbrite where all the information you need is here and you can select the date you want to attend there. This is the same thing for prayer pilgrimages because both these in-person events require or opportunities require registration and that's something the diocese really wants us to do in case we need contact tracing. Hopefully we won't, but that is the reason we need to register for those two opportunities. Christian Formation is next. The old Grace at Home page had everything laid out on the page. We have a lot more opportunities now, so we've separated them out, children, youth and adults. Right now, you can go to each of these pages and see the opportunities and you can register, which Cheryl would, I'm sure Cheryl's going to talk about this later. She would really like you to register by September 15th. Some of these groups are, will get together and decide on days they want to meet. And so we really want to know who wants to be in each group. Youth and adults, same thing. Music is also new. Will has some information about what the choirs have been up to. Friends of Music, they will have a season. It will be modified, but it'll kick off with a concert on October 24th. So if you'd like to see their full schedule, you can click there. Will is also bringing back his Spotify playlists. Those seem to be really well liked in the spring and so he's going to continue to do those. And you can find a link to all of those lists right here, including the newest one. And then we've collected all the old ones from the spring too, if you'd like to go back and listen. Compassion was touched upon, the pastoral care phone list. These are some contact information. If you need to let us know anything, that's who you contact. Newcomers and visitors. We have had some visitors to our page and we've had a couple of welcome cards filled out since the pandemic, which I think is pretty cool. So that just gives those people a spot to go, let us know they've visited us either online or in one of our livestream worship services. And then the stewardship box is also new today and Stuart will talk a little bit more about that and take you through the telling our story pages of our site. I've added a calendar here, so it'll bring up some events. You can click this box to look for more. You can also change your view and view it by the month or the week or even the day. Then at the very bottom of the page, we have some links to some other pages of our website that you might find helpful. And if there's anything else you get to, you need to get to a lot on our website and you'd like me to add that link, feel free to let me know. So that is our Grace at Home page. And let us know in the chat if you have any questions about where to find anything and hope that's helpful.
Thank you so much. It's so, so helpful. Like she said, feel free to put anything in the chat, any questions. And if there is a spot, as she said, that you find yourself going to often, that you'd like pulled up, that's really important for us to know. So feel free to share that with us. I want to highlight just a few things for you. It's, this is just a list that I have to put in front of. So if you, if you have any questions on any of these, you can feel free to email Reba or me about what I'm going to share with you now. This is just, you know, info that we think it would be great for you to have close at hand in front of you. As has already been mentioned, we have our new AV updates in the nave. So we're ironing out the kinks in that, but I think having two different cameras and being able to zoom in, that's a wonderful tool to have. And I think it makes our worship experience even richer on Sunday morning. So thanks for all of those for Jeremy and Will and their work and setting it up and looking at sound and for Reba, of course, as always for fielding the admin details day, day to day, day in and day out. Thank you. Our Sanctuary Plaza is coming along, so we're getting very close. It's become a metaphor for this entire season. And that's really important to say because as Dan said, we all find ourselves in different parts of our lives where things take on an added significance. And for me, it has been the plaza. I think there's something to the fact that we've not really been able to enjoy that together during this time. It's like it's waiting in its, in its own way. So that is coming along. And I want to take a minute to thank Dale Jaeger for all of her work and for Jeremy and for Mary Lynn Coyle and for Doug for always being there with checklists and to keep that in front of us in the midst of what really was a chaotic time early on. And if it hadn't been for them, holding those detailed pieces, a lot would have been lost. So thank you for all that you've done to hold that. I want to let you know too, and some of you might have heard, that there's a working group that is looking at the possibility of purchasing the law firm next door. It's still very theoretical and very possible. So Hank Goble is helping hold that key piece, working with a team of people to really vet that and hopefully make a recommendation to the vestry soon. So just want you to know that. As Dan said, the Children of Grace preschool is doing a phenomenal job with Angeline and Meg. Each day is running smoothly. Parents are doing well and children are happy to be there. So thanks to the whole team who hold that wing down so, so well and all the work that they've done. Our community partners has already been mentioned. Cynthia is working with our outreach compassion group to go back to all of our community partners now that we can look and better assess where our budget is. Reba constantly crunches our numbers to see where we are month to month. And we're going back to sit with each of them and see what is actually needed. And the stories, to go back to that, that we're hearing are really important for us to know. So we are going to circle back around with all of our partners to see how we can fulfill our pledges to them that come from our operating budget as well. So just wanted you to know that that work is being done. It's already been said, we have our evening prayer and our pilgrimage space for people who really want to come into the nave. So if it would be a meaningful thing for you to come into the nave to pray, I've set up Tuesday and Thursday. And the note that I sent out at an earlier point, if you would like to come to an evening or even perhaps to find a way after the Sunday service when people are there, I need to hear from you if that's something that people want before we start setting up multiple spaces. At this point in our life, I want to let you know that in one week span, we have 12 different services, 12. So we have an incredible team of people who is helping hold all of those. So before we add any other services, I really need to hear that it's needed or else I'm going to have to pack a sleeping bag and get people up there to start spending the night. So just let us know if that's something that would be meaningful to you. We have had a few funerals and Cynthia and I have done very small group of graveside services for us in our columbarium garden. We have zoomed in families and friends from all over the place and found a way to set up AV in our columbarium garden. We have zoomed in families and friends from all over the place and found a way to set up AV in our columbarium. So that leads me to, I want you to know that we're creating a special All Saint Service that will be fully recorded ahead of time. It will be sent out to the parish as a link. And Mary, Mary Demmler, Betsy Powell and I, the three of us are going to do a reflection from different places. Mary, I think is going to do one from her family farm, from their cemetery. Betsy's going to do one from the chapel. And I'm going to do one from the unmarked graves at Alta Vista Cemetery. And we're going to create what I think will be a really meaningful service for us to really mark this time to celebrate the lives of those who have died in our parish and in our families. So just wanted you to know that that is coming as well. And I want to take a moment to thank Edgar. I don't know if he can even be on the call because he, he works full-time and goes to school full-time. He has more hours in a day than I do and I don't know exactly how that works. But this summer was a really painful time for Cynthia and me because we couldn't go and visit people in the medical center. And Edgar was there doing his clinical pastoral ed. And it was an incredible blessing for us to have him and to be able to text him during the day when Nancy was there, when Carolyn had her baby. All of these people who we love and couldn't get to, Edgar could get there. And that meant the world to us to be able to have him as a, as a partner. And he is an incredible chaplain and an incredible soul. And he will make a very, very fine priest. You'll put Cynthia and all the rest of us in need to shame with what he can do because he's a great, great guy. I'm going to take a minute now to pass it to Cheryl and Will, but I want to thank them for what they've done to hold all of the pieces around formation and music, which has not been easy. Just have to slide into a different framework and figure out a way to continue our practice of prayer and our growth. And also to be moved out of our physical space. That's been hard on all of us. But I think with, with both of them and what they've done. So I want to thank Cheryl in particular for helping set up the Stations of the Cross. It's been a deeply meaningful piece for this entire town. So I'm going to pass it to Cheryl and she's going to walk you through some formation spaces that's important for you to know.
Thank you. Thank you. The most important thing for you to know is that fall stuff is getting ready to start next week. I'm hopeful that you have seen the, the things in the newsletter about upcoming classes. And I am eternally grateful to Jennifer for setting up webpage, but I wanted to show you. I'm conscious of not wanting to talk too long. I want to show you where to find all this stuff. So I'm going to share my screen quickly. And you will see this is the Grace at Home website. This is down, further down the page where Jennifer was just showing you. And there is a section for children, youth, and adults. And if you go to each one of those, you will see the opportunities that are for each thing. But one of the most exciting things we're getting ready to start for families and for, you know, it's aimed at the young, but also the young at heart. It is intergenerational. And I hope all of you who are interested in the topic will come and explore with us. It's Compassion Camp. It will be kind of a hybrid model. We will, at the beginning of each week, publish a list of videos with stories and songs and Karen is leading us in some yoga and some art activities that you can do at home at your own pace. There will also be supplemental stuff for teens and adults that goes, digs a little bit deeper. And then, and you can work on those units at your own time, whenever you, whenever you can and what fits best for your family and your schedule in these crazy days. And then at the end of each session, at the end of each week, we will get together. And I am hopeful that now that we can use Reba 50, that if it is the will of the people who are doing it, that we can meet in person after evening prayer on Sunday evenings and do some intergenerational work with materials and enjoy being together. We can also do a Zoom meetup if that's the most appropriate thing. So that is our main thing for children and families. I've been sending out weekly devotionals and Children's Chapel videos each week. Those continue. And if for whatever reason you're not on that list and you would like to be, let me know. We can fix that. For adults, you should have seen in the newsletter, there are several different opportunities beginning. Father Stuart will be leading a Bible study on the Book of Jeremiah on Tuesday mornings via Zoom. Adults are welcome to join Compassion Camp. The Parenting with Grace group will also be starting back up. They've taken several weeks off for the summer, but they will also be doing a hybrid model with some Zoom and some in-person on-campus meetings. And then Sacred Ground is a Race and Faith conversation that is based on a film-based curriculum created by the National Church. The material will be videos each week with some articles to read. And then you will also work through a couple of books. We're hoping to, I have somebody who's willing to facilitate a group online. And if there were a need for an in-person group, we can, we can do that too. You can follow these links and see, get an overview of this opportunity. I'm really excited about getting to check this out as a community. And then there's ongoing staring prayer and yoga. And like Jennifer showed you with Will's Spotify playlists, she has captured earlier articles about different prayer practices and different reflections that are all on this page that you can follow and find out. And this will also, the prayer practices will get you to the stations online if you haven't had an opportunity to check that out. And youth will begin meeting this Sunday in person on campus. They will be meeting by cohort. So if you have a youth, check out your email for the schedule. Sixth graders, sixth and seventh graders will meet this coming Sunday. And then the next week it will be eighth and ninth graders. And the next week it will be 10th through 12th graders. That way we can manage our numbers. So that's all kicking off. And we just want to make sure that we've got everybody included, that everybody's getting the information they need. And particularly with Compassion Camp, since we'll be publishing stuff, there's a lot of licensing issues. So I really need you to register so that I can get information to you and make sure that you know how, how to, how to get it and, and who, who you should be talking to about scheduling. So that is a drive-by, but please use the resource that Jennifer has created for us. Spend some time poking around, find the things that fill you up. And the gift of being out of our space as Dan has told us is that you might be able to do more than one of these. You're not stuck to having to choose one at 9:30. There will be different things going on at different times. So check all the boxes that apply and plug in where you can. And I hope that you will find some refreshment and some nourishment in the process. So thank you.
Carol, thank you. Thank you for all that you've done. Will, we're going to slide to you to get an update on music to let folks know what is possible.
Hi, everyone. A few things have been touched on, but I'll kind of fill out some more details. So our older chorister group and adults met for the first time for the season last night via Zoom. And then we just got the exciting news that we can start to do some in-person gatherings that will work better for us. So some of you heard about this last night and I'll send out more information to all of our musical groups on Monday. But starting on September 23rd, our St. Cecilia Choir, that's the, the younger chorister group and our older chorister group will both start meeting in person on Wednesday nights. So we're very excited about that. And our adult choir will switch between online and in-person doing different sorts of activities and some, some social time as well. So our Wednesday nights will be back to a semi-normal schedule, just in a modified version of it. Sunday mornings will add back in a little more music. So if you attend the nine o'clock Zoom service, we'll add a soloist back in. And if you attend the 10:45 livestream service, we should have some better quality audio for music patching in any week now. So you'll, you'll be able to hear the soloist and the organ crystal clear, which should be a really nice addition. We'll add in a virtual quartet of singers for one hymn and there'll be a soloist there live and I'll add back in a postlude as well. So once we have that better audio, I hope you'll all enjoy hearing the organ and singing in a much more full capacity. And then Jennifer already touched on our Spotify playlists are back. So you can find the weekly one in your newsletter or you can head to the website and see all of them laid out there as well. And Jennifer also mentioned that our Friends of Music series will kick off on October 24th with a livestreamed organ recital from Ray and Beth Chenault. They're kind of local superstars in the organ world. They were at All Saints Episcopal in Atlanta for many, many years, just recently retired. And they're very well-known for their organ duo career. So both of them will be at the organ. They've commissioned dozens and dozens of pieces over their long career of music for two players at one organ. So we'll be able to utilize our new livestreaming equipment to stream that recital for you. And I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. That'll be great. Having this new updated AV system is going to be wonderful. And just so you know, going forward, we'll continue to stream our services when the time comes and we are all back in the nave. We're going to continue to do that because one of the most meaningful things that Cynthia and Cheryl and I talk about a lot on the pastoral side is the number of people in the parish who have been just as involved as anyone else has during this time because we've all been home. So we've all been homebound and it's been this wonderful experience for all of us to be considered homebound. And so we will continue to, to find ways to livestream services. There's a couple of brief notes. One of which is at this point, this is something that the bishop shared on Wednesday that I think is important to remind ourselves of is that we're not a congregational church. And I really appreciated him saying in terms of still not being able to share communion. I love the way that he said it. He said that the house of bishops as a collective body is putting together a framework church-wide so that we all figure out a way to do communion, to, to share that so that it doesn't change our theology. One of the things that's always very helpful to be aware of is that when you go tinkering with the liturgy, you set a precedent. And so people who follow us will always look back and wonder what we did and they'll think that it was okay to do that. Okay. And so I really appreciate that, you know, the bishop himself said, I don't always get to do just what I want to do. I'm, I'm accountable to the church as a whole. That's been a lesson I think that I have learned and that we've all learned in these past six months that I really paid attention to is that we don't just get to come up with things on our own because we are connected to each other. So when they do send out those guidelines around communion, we'll be able to add that in, knowing that it's being added in, in the entire church. So I want to take the last few minutes to just to launch, we're going to launch our stewardship campaign early this year to give ourselves time. And it really builds on all that's been shared in the sense of the stories that we are able to tell each other, whether it's sadness or joy, whether it's grief or bliss or insights of grace that we have that, that we've gotten in our lives and just the encounters that we've had with each other in different ways. That weeknight zoomplin, the zomplin group, it's a common refrain in that group that people have gotten closer to each other than we were whenever we were meeting in person because we see each other most nights. And so if you have not joined in that space, know that you're welcome to do so. You don't have to have joined in. No group is ever closed. So for our stewardship campaign, we really wanted to come at it that way and just say, it's important to tell our story. You really be honest and say, what does this experience felt like to each of us? And it's not always happy. Sometimes it's solemn and all of that is really important. You know, I think about our, our family, this has not exactly been an overall happy time for us across the board for six months. But it's been real. It's been real for all of us. So I'm going to share my screen with you and as Jennifer shared and highlighted with us, on the Grace at Home page, you'll see down toward as you keep scrolling, our stewardship section that really looks at, as we've talked about, telling our story. And we have quite a story to tell. And I think of all the work that has been done on our capital campaign as well, that we put on pause, on a pastoral pause during this time until we could figure out how to get our feet underneath us and gauge how to step back into that space as well. And that's part of our story as well. So on here, and you click on this button to join us in telling our story and it will take you to the landing page for our stewardship campaign. We want to try to do it online this year, but we recognize that not everyone uses online. And so when we send this video out, we hope that people watch it. And if you would rather have a paper copy sent to you, just let us know that and we can do that. We are happy to do that, to mail one to your house. So you'll find on here a little reflection piece. And then there are buttons. There are key buttons that you can click to make your pledge, submit your time and talent and also pay your pledge online to really move into this online platform that we can utilize together. And as well, when you go on here and you click, you'll also see, we really encourage you to include in this and to share with us what some of these stories have been for you. To really take the time and send, you know, a note and let us know what have you learned? What have you learned about yourself, about your family? What insights have been given you? How have you been stretched? How have you grown? Because I think all of that is really important. So we're kicking our stewardship campaign off, give ourselves more time. And then the vestry will circle around as we navigate this and gauge looking at 2021 in terms of follow-up calls that really will be particularly pastoral this year. So at this point, I want to pause and see if anyone has any questions that Reba or Dan and I and others might be able to answer for you in just a few minutes. And then we'll have this recorded to play later as thoughts pop up. Anything? Well, we do hope that, you know, this is a lot of info just to put in front of you. So if you need to take some time when we post it, feel free to do that and watch it again and reach out to us and let us know if anything pops up. And I want to thank Cynthia and Jack. We'll say a special set of prayers for them on Sunday as they step into their sabbatical space. And I want to thank David and Betsy. You are God sends to move here, to move back at this particular time and to be able to help and hold the pastoral life of this parish. And also Mary Demmler to be able to share, especially in the preaching rotations and to share. And also Mary Demmler to be able to share, especially in the preaching rotations and to share that as well. We have a great team. It's an incredible community. And Brenda, if it weren't for your institutional memory, we would have been lost years ago. And thank you for all that you have done from home to keep us all connected and aware. Talk about stories. If you want to know some stories, just call Brenda. She will fill you in. But if there's no other questions, thank you. Thank you for taking the time. You can unmute yourself and talk to each other if you want, but thank you for taking the time to come. And we hope this has been helpful.
Absolutely.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
We love being here.
Good to see everybody.
Good seeing you, Brenda.
Good to see you too.